Talk the brownie with pepperoni appropriate as we talk about health. Folks who will be leading us tonight.
Yes, well, welcome to tonight's study session. It is a teaching and learning topic. So we have our chief academic officer who will serve as master of ceremonies. And I know he has a bunch of his talented staff here excited to work with you this evening. So Dr. Valentino.
He was here.
And he came up as Guadalupi.
And now he's gone.
I added him to the panelist link, and so now he's here.
Thank you, Cara. Well, good evening, Chair Lowry again.
Dr. Valentino, where are you?
I I'm in Portland.
No, no, I meant your background. Your background looks like.
Oh, yes. When I'm in Portland, I use a waterfall. And when I'm in Palm Springs, I use a desert scene.
Perfect.
Yeah. So Superintendent Guerrero, directors, thank you for the opportunity this evening. The conversation tonight could be no more timely. As we discussed, as you discussed earlier this evening regarding the board policy on student suicide prevention. Tonight's topic on student mental health and wellness will hopefully complement and enrich the goals of that policy. And so this evening, Dr. Sarah Davis and Dr. Jenny Withacome will be engaging with you in this important topic. So I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Davis. Sarah?
Great. Hi, everyone. Thank you so much. Dr. Withacome, do you want to launch the slideshow while I am introducing? Thank you, Dr. Valentino. Good evening, Board Chair Lowry, Directors and Superintendent Guerrero. We're so grateful to be here to share an experience of the work that we are doing for students in PPS. And let's see, how are we doing on screen sharing?
I'm not allowed to screen share at this moment. It said, I need permission.
Can assign that to you too?
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do to get us launched. Appreciate you.
There we go. You should now have permission for that.
All right. So we are going to start with a middle school health lesson. We'll translate to an update on the important work happening in health and PPS. And finish by leaving time for questions and discussions. And before I turn it over, I would actually like to introduce Dr. Jenny Withacome, who started in PPS in 2016 as the Health and Physical Education TOSA. Dr. Withacome came to PPS from the University of Colorado at Boulder, where she was a faculty member in the Ethnic Studies Department. Her research focus is critical sports studies with an emphasis on the lived experience of BIPOC athletes and LGBTQ athletes. Since joining PPS, Dr. Withacome has worked passionately to create health and physical education programs that engage all students in equitable, inclusive, skills-based health and physical education, so they may thrive in a global community. With the arrival of Superintendent Guerrero and his vision for standards aligned and supported instruction in the district, Dr. Withacome was selected to become the Program Administrator for Health and Physical Education and has expanded the program with K-12 health scope and sequences that are consistently taught K-12 and supported with professional development. Next slide, Jenny. Graduates of Portland Public Schools will be compassionate, critical thinkers, able to collaborate and solve problems and be prepared to lead a more socially just world. And I'll turn it over to Jenny to lead you in a lesson that demonstrates the ways in which health supports this vision. Thank you all for this opportunity.
Thank you all for being here and for participating as students in our health education lesson. I'm going to go over just some basics around health education and how the the system has shifted shifted over the last several years. And then we'll jump right into our lesson. So some of the things that I wanted to share with you is that we have recently made a shift in about 2016 from a content-based approach to health education to a skills-based approach. So on the right-hand side, where you see the triangle, you see our National Health Education Standards, which is what we've adopted in Oregon as well. And you can see that core concepts, that's really the 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 level of health education that we used to really focus on, a lot of facts. And and that is a great base for us. But what we're really focusing on is encouraging students to build the skills that they need to engage in healthy practices. So what we found, what research shows us, is that we can tell students that all the the terrible things that are in cigarettes, but that doesn't necessarily stop them from smoking, right? But if we can empower them with the skills to access that information on their own, to navigate conversations with peers and deal with peer pressure, to set goals, to make healthy decisions and to, you know, to stick with those goals and to advocate for peers and others to make healthy decisions, we can have a much longer lasting effect. So what you'll see is that the focus is really on skill and engagement and activity. You know, all of us can Google concepts, and so we want to give them the tools to to Google safely and then to put those, what they learn into into effect. So you're going to see a big shift in what we're doing. The other thing that I wanted to share with you is I know that especially during comprehensive distance learning, we are really focusing on social emotional learning and making sure that we're connecting with our students. That is actually poignant, given the topics we're covering tonight. But as you can see, health education and the Castle competencies are well matched. And there's a lot of overlap in what we do in health education and social emotional learning. So what we have is a really complementary approach, and that's something that we really like to support and work with the Office of Student Support Services to ensure that we're providing the the most robust and well-rounded program for our students. So just wanted to highlight some of those those shifts. So what we do in health education is that there's essentially, there's more standards in health education than we could possibly cover in any given year. There's just so much. We could spend all day, every day talking about health. And so we have to really pare down, okay, what, where do we want to focus our efforts so that we make sure that it's as applicable as possible to our students? And so you were sent two reports, which are based on the Youth Risk Behavior Survey that our students in grades nine through 12 participated in in the fall of 2019, so pre-COVID. I know that if you've gotten a chance to dig into this report a little bit, it definitely can can generate lots of questions and wonderings. And in the in the fullness of time, I absolutely am happy to stay and answer questions, meet again and answer questions, but for the sake of the the lesson, we're going to focus on just one data point, and we're going to save some time at the end if you have questions about additional data points. This is the first time that Oregon has successfully completed what we call the YRBS survey. It was a representative sample of our students across our comprehensive high schools. So it is considered representative of health behaviors for students nine through 12. One thing I want to point out is that the lesson we're going to be doing is actually a seventh grade lesson. You might be wondering why I'm sharing high school data for doing a seventh grade lesson. And that's because in the prevention world, what we know is that when we see a spike, we want to be targeting, you know, the behaviors and the skills that the student need before we see the spike. And so if we see a spike in the behavior in ninth grade, 10th grade, we want to make sure that we're we're starting and laying that groundwork early on. We want to be laying it in, you know, late elementary and definitely in middle school. So that's how we, that's just one way that we can use this data to really inform a really thoughtful scope and sequence for health education. So the data point that I want to share and is connected to the topics of this evening is that in the fall of 2019, up to a third of our high school students report navigating depression and suicidal ideation with a significantly higher risk among our female students and our LGBT students. I will point out that transgender students were not a subcategory this in the 2019 YRBS, but will be for the 2021 YRBS. Thirty-four percent of our students reported feeling sad or hopeless for an extended period of time, and 17% of our students seriously considered attempting suicide. We know that this data is is staggering, and we know that it's pre-COVID data. And we want to use this data to say, okay, what are the the different pieces that we need to put into place to make sure that our students have the skills they need to to deal with these feelings and to make sure that they know where the resources are available to turn to. So this is data that we use to inform our curriculum, but also to share with the many other departments in Portland Public Schools to make sure everyone knows how to create a well-rounded support system for our students. So what we want to point out, of course, is that suicide prevention is not just curriculum. It's, it's, you know, it's a lot of things. It's, it's not just the lessons that we teach in the classroom, but it's ensuring that our students have food security and affordable housing and that we're de-stigmatizing mental health and that we're making sure that our students know where mental health services are available to them, both within the schools and in the communities, that we're making sure we have race-based student group access. And there's, there's acceptance of those students who identify as LGBTQIA+, that we have positive climate for our students and that our students feel safe and supported and cared for and connected. And this, of course, is also directly related to Addy's Act, Senate Bill 52, which is is coming into place. So these are things, of course, we don't tackle all of this through our prevention curriculum, but we're able to start the path for a lot of these different pieces, and that's, that's where we'll go today. And one thing I do, I do want to point out, this, this is from the CDC's slide, and we won't read through all of it. But on the CDC's website, that, you know, this is what they say schools can do to protect adolescent mental health. And I crossed out schools can because PPS is already doing a lot of these things. I put checkmarks by all the things that we're doing because we are, we are engaging in a lot of work around prevention and intervention and support to create safe and supportive environments for our students. And we were already seeing those those shifts being made. And so although this, this data is distressing, and we realize that in it being pre-COVID data, we might anticipate that the numbers might even be worse right now. But we're already doing a lot of the groundwork that we need to be doing, and that's a good, that's a good thing for us. So we know that we're already making these steps forward. So although it is hard data to see, we can say we've got a nice foundation to build on. So as I mentioned, we're going to do a seventh grade unit. And although I don't have time to go into the full K-12 scope and sequence and how we lay everything out, just a basic overview, and it is provided as an addendum in the PowerPoint, is that what we do is we teach four units every single year, K through 12. And every unit has a skill and a content pairing. So for example, for our seventh grade unit, the skill is interpersonal communication. And then the content is mental health specifically targeting suicide prevention. So up in the corner of the slide, you'll see the three main skills of interpersonal communication for sixth through eighth grade. And then you'll see what our unit progression is. So we start with just a foundation of communication, and then we build on that skill, connecting it to mental health and eventually to suicide prevention. And so on the far right, you'll see that the two lessons where I'm going to be pulling one of our activities from is a lesson on avoiding stereotypes and then the influence of microaggressions on mental health. Because again, we want to be looking at the data, you know, specifically that says our LGBTQ students are overrepresented with regards to suicidal ideation. And we know that that is also true for many of our BIPOC students as well. So that's where we're going to kind of pull in. So the students will have had quite a bit of setup coming up to this point. And then there'll be, you know, some follow-up as we move through, but that's where we'll be in this unit. And then this is how the lesson itself progresses, because again, we don't have a lot of time. So we're going to, we're going to focus on one activity. So the lesson itself would start with an understanding of stereotypes and microaggressions. Where we're going to jump in is how we connect to microaggressions and mental health and what impact that can have on mental health and what we can do about that to support each other and to support our students. Okay, so into the lesson. So microaggressions, we've already kind of talked about how stereotypes and buying into stereotypes, whether consciously or unconsciously, can turn into what we call microaggressions or can turn into behaviors called microaggressions. And these are everyday verbal, nonverbal, environmental slights, snubs, insults. They might be intentional, they might be unintentional, but they communicate a hostile environment. They say, you're not welcome. And in and of themselves, a lot of times when people see them or or hear them or discuss them, as you can see the, some examples of them up on the on the slide, we think, ah, it shouldn't be that big a deal. It was, I didn't mean it that way. It's not a big thing. And yet, the the piece about microaggression, especially when we say micro, we act like it's a small thing. It shouldn't have that big of an impact. But think of it as death by a thousand cuts, right? Because although individually, any one microaggression might not be, you know, deafening, it's the repeated every day, multiple times a day, in every space that adds up so much over time and can and can lead to and can lead to some of the the mental health challenges that we were going to be talking about. So when we think about microaggressions, we need to think of them as as a whole picture and the impact that they can have. So we're going to start by doing an activity. And so I'm going to have everybody click on the survey here. And actually, everybody who is watching and has hung with the board all the evening, you can actually participate as well. So anybody can go to this bit.ly, and I would love it if our if our watchers at home would participate as well. But you're going to go to this survey. I'm going to give you six minutes to complete a survey, and it's totally anonymous. And it's going to share with you 10 different microaggressions that students have reported hearing or experiencing in schools. And and it's going to have you share your own experiences, whether you've experienced them or not. And then we'll go through some of the results together. Are there any questions before we jump to the survey?
And we would also love for everyone from PPS who's logged in on the phone call to take the survey with us as well. That would be wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, what am I missing? I can't like work the link.
You have to type it in, Julia. You can't just click it from this. So you have to type in.
I was like really trying clicking it there.
You have to type.
You just, you have to copy the bit.ly slash PPS-help into your browser.
And the the capitalization matters because I did it first without capitalization, and it didn't work. So it's B I T dot L Y slash capital P P S dash capital H health is the link you need to type into your browser.
You can also click on the survey in our, in our handout in Board Book. That's a live link.
Okay, so I will give you all.
Pollution there.
So I'll give you all six minutes to work on your survey.
As it did that. But it must be. Excellent. We should have about one more minute. All right. Could you give me a hand up if anybody who I can see on screen at least needs more time? Okay. All right. So while we're, while we're talking, you can still be finishing up the survey for those of you folks at home. But something that you might have noticed about the survey is that it touches on a lot of different topics. And when we've, when we've kind of, you know, started our early conversations about stereotypes over the last several days, we realized that like stereotypes, microaggressions, you know, they may be based on socioeconomic status or disability or gender identity or race or religion. You know, there's, there's any number of identity characteristics that might, might be selected out and and used in in this way, in this negative way. And again, although, you know, there are many types of differences that exist among us, and we've talked about that. There are certain aspects of of difference that have been selected out and have been assigned a lot more meaning in our society than others. And so when we experience microaggressions with regards to our identity characteristics like race or sexual orientation or gender, you know, the, again, the impact that it can have, that daily repetitive impact can be really severe. And these are things, all of these survey responses are things that many students report hearing in the schools and classrooms. So what I want to ask is, which ones really stood out to you? Before we click on and we take a look at the results, were there any of the 10 statements that really stood out that elicited some feelings that surprised you before we move forward?
I think for me, it was interesting in that it actually highlighted for me some of my privilege because I'm from Scotland. I have a funky first name. And people often know, they've met my mom, that I'm not from here. And so people will say things to me, some, like when I was growing up, oh, you speak such good English. And it's like, yeah, that's my first language. That all that stuff was more funny because I was white, because I came from a wealthier, well, you know, like a middle-class family. And so that those kinds of things get said to people in other spaces as well, and that it's not so funny. It was a good reminder that even though I have experienced some of those microaggressions, I still experience them them sitting in a place of a lot of privilege.
Thank you. Thank you so much for sharing. Would anyone else like to share?
I noticed the focus on microaggressions. How about macro? Middle, middle grades, I was bullied the whole year, not physically, but emotionally humiliated. And at least one teacher knew about it. But, you know, it was gym class, so boys will be boys, get tough, kind of a thing. So that, that's a whole. And I'm, I'm sure other, many of our students experienced that, something similar to that.
So you raise a really important point, which is that while microaggressions are often kind of, they, they often slip under the radar of many of, maybe many of the observers, not, not the person who's experiencing them, but the observers. There's also a lot of macroaggressions that we can see. And we talk about that when we talk about especially very explicit bullying. And microaggressions can easily turn into macroaggressions and even as far as assault. You know, so there's a whole range. And so you bring up a really good point. You also bring up the point, I think, in statement number eight, which talked about having educators overhear microaggressions and ignore them. And that, and that added impact that that might have on us or our peers when someone that we, that we trust doesn't step in. Thank you for sharing.
Another thing that struck me is just how they could be perceived as just like offhand comments. Like, oh, you're just being sensitive. Like, that's not what I meant. But they land completely differently to the recipient.
Yes, and this goes back to our, the classroom agreements that we have in our health class, which is that we need to focus on impact over intent. So, you know, that's something that we agreed to do as a class because it is so important. Regardless of what our intent was, if the words that we use have an impact, we, we need to make amends, and that is how we move forward and we grow as a community. So I'm so glad that you called that out. Thank you. Any final comments before we look at the results? Okay, let's take a look. All right, we're going to hope we can do this. All right. Can you see the the survey results? Okay. This just shows that 23 people participated. So I'm so glad that we got some folks at home to participate with us as well, as well. So again, I wish that we had enough time here to go through each of these statements and really unpack each of them. But let's take a look at the results, and then we'll go back through and we can unpack a couple that you are most interested in looking at. So we can see about, when we're looking at mispronouncing a name, after already being corrected, about 50/50 experiencing that. If we look at a teacher not expecting you to do well because of maybe coming from a specific neighborhood, 30/70. Being singled out because of your background and or one of your, one or more of your identities. Overwhelmingly, well over half of of folks have experienced that. Having your experiences questioned because they didn't represent the majority of your classmates' experiences. Again, over 50% of students experiencing that. Having incorrect pronouns attributed to you even after you've indicated your preferred pronouns. So most people had not experienced that, but a few folks had as well. Right? And as we're going through, I think what's really critical is that each one, we're thinking, what do we notice about this? What is this experience? If if we've had this experience or one of our classmates has had this experience, what impact might that have? And how, again, when we tie it all back to mental health, how might that impact somebody's mental health? Have you ever been expected to purchase additional materials for a class project or assignment? So overwhelmingly, folks have had this experience. Were you ever complimented on how good your English is? So some, some people, yes. Most had said no. Have you ever had a teacher or school official ignore a microaggression they witnessed and which came from another student and or teacher? Overwhelmingly, 91% have had that experience. And this ties back to some of the data that we looked at earlier in the unit where we were looking at the experiences of our LGBTQ students in the state of Oregon. So we pulled the Glisten data, remember? And we looked and we, we noticed that a significant proportion of students who reported to faculty and staff that they had been bullied, whether, you know, subtly or overtly, due to their suspected or real LGBTQ status, the the teacher ended up doing nothing. And we talked about a lot that it's, it's not always that, you know, that that a teacher is doing it maliciously or that they don't want to help. A lot of times, we don't know how to step in. And that's part of why we, as students, want to have these conversations now, and we want to know. And we want to know how we can stand up for ourselves and for each other, and create a safe and supportive environment, and how we can encourage that community throughout our entire school. Were you mostly read and/or taught stories written by white authors and/or featuring only white main characters? So again, overwhelmingly, that has been most people's experience. And have you ever experienced microaggressions in schools based on your identities, but that were not listed in the survey? So again, almost 50/50. So there are a number of identities that we didn't touch on in just these 10 statements that people have experienced microaggressions. So I know that was very quick. But are there any that you want to look at again, and maybe comment on, unpack? Have more wonderings or thoughts on the outcomes? All right, well, I really appreciate everybody's participation in this. I know this is a pretty difficult topic to talk about, but I think it's just so important when we think about how to make sure that we understand the impact that a person's identity can have on their lived experience. So let's return to our presentation, and we'll connect it now to the larger topic of mental health, which we've been talking about for this entire unit. Okay, so this whole unit has really been focused on mental health. And so if we think about, you know, the experience of having microaggressions, or as Director Bailey mentioned, macroaggressions on a repeated and recurrent basis, it can lead to feeling invisible, thinking about, again, that statement of, you know, having your name mispronounced over and over again. Being, you know, asking to have someone use a different set of pronouns than maybe they would expect to use over and over and over again, and that feeling of invisibility that can come with that. It can lead us to lower self-esteem. You know, if someone constantly has low expectations for us, how do we, you know, build our resiliency to have high expectations for ourself when, you know, someone has constantly low expectations for us? It can lead to high anxiety, not knowing what's going to happen, or when it's going to happen, or how often it's going to happen. It can decrease trust, as we talk about, you know, we want to, we want our schools to be safe environments. So how do we make sure that we can create a safe environment in our classroom community, and in our building, and in our district? It can lead to higher levels of depression and feelings of powerlessness. And especially when we talk about, again, you know, when you're experiencing that as a student or as a young person, if that feeling is coming from a teacher, you know, how can you talk to a teacher and explain what's going on? Especially when we have that power differential, right? And so how do we work together as a team and as a community so that we can hopefully start to create, you know, bolster or barrier against some of this impact? So what we want to, you know, what we're going to kind of conclude with this lesson is we want to think about two really important things. And we've been talking about these kind of throughout the quarter, but we really want to touch on them again. So one is unconscious bias. So we want to make sure that we are taking the time to learn more about what we think, and how we think, and why we think about all the different and many wonderful identities that exist out there. Unconscious bias, remember, we've talked about, is biases that we have that are ingrained from all different places all around us. They come from the media, they come from our communities, they come from parents, peers, everywhere. And unconsciously, we absorb them. And so, you know, we have to be able to take time to say, what are some of the biases that I might have? Where do they surface? When do thoughts pop into my head where I'm like, whoa, where did that come from? And, you know, how do we understand them and unpack them and make better sense of them? And then that allows us to move forward. If we say, oh, no, I'm not biased, I don't have any biases. Well, we all have biases, because that's the whole point of the unconscious bias. So it's a better place to start, to say, okay, what are my biases? Where do they come from? And how do I make sense of them so I can create a safe community for my peers? The other piece, you know, is thinking about, what can we do to create a more safe and supportive environment in a more equitable space? So what do we do when a peer makes a joke about somebody's identity? You know, do we stand up? Are we a bystander? Do we stay quiet? You know, what can we do? Can we take a look at what our school policies are around protecting different identities? What are district policies are? What kinds of groups do we have on campus to support students of different identities? What can you do to be an ally if you have privilege in one or more of those identity categories? So thinking about ways that we can expand that safety for all, and that community for all. And there's a lot of different ways that we can do this. And we're going to look at that as we move into some of our later advocacy projects in health education. And your homework tonight, should you choose to do homework, will set us up for our lesson tomorrow. Same bat time, same bat station, right? Is to create your "just because" poem. And your "just because" poem is to give you a chance to reflect on times when you've experienced microaggressions, when you've been stereotyped. This is actually from a former PPS student. And what you'll have is, this will link you to your prompts. And so the "just because," and you get to fill in your identity and the mistakes that people have made about your identity. And so this is just an example for you. And this is what will bring with us tomorrow, to tomorrow's class, to set up the next level of our discussion. So I'm so grateful for your participation in the lesson. Does anyone have any questions before we close our lesson?
I have a question, but not as a student. But I'm wondering, on a lesson like this, how do you assess, like, whether students have changed their behavior because of it, or?
Yeah, so what we would do is, the assessment that we would really want to focus on would be a communication assessment. So we might set up either a series of role plays, or a kind of a "what would you do?" And we would do one early on in the, before the unit started, kind of, how would you walk through this scenario? And then we would do it again with, you know, kind of a similar but different scenario towards the end, to see if we're seeing a behavior change. But of course, it's a long-term project, because we know that. Well, I wanted to share with you just a little bit more about health education in PPS, and then we'll have some time for questions. So just, I wanted to share with you some of our celebrations. I can't read through all of it, because there's too many wonderful things I would love to share with you. We have really accomplished a lot in health education. I'm just really proud of all the work that we've done with the support that we've had from the district and central office. Everyone has just been wonderful. We're a part of some amazing coalitions nationwide. We have our health guaranteed and viable curriculum K through 12. We've got healthy teen advocates. We have a number of policy collaborations that we've participated in, both that have originated in OTL, but have also originated in the Office of Student Supports. We train counselors, as well as teachers, in our health scope and sequence. And we actually have 97% of all PPS middle and high school teachers trained in sex ed basics and violence prevention. We are a large district, and I consider that a huge win. We've also brought in over $4 million of grant funding to support health education since 2017. And that's allowed us to do even more, and to really be a model across the state and across the nation, honestly. This is just a quick list, and again, I won't go through all of it, but this is a quick list of those grants that we've brought in. Many of them focused on comprehensive sexuality education, creating safe and supportive environments, particularly for LGBTQ identified students, mental health supports at both local and national level. And just to highlight a few of our really amazing projects, one of the grants that we're just finishing up is our Health for K-5 Grant. It allowed us to provide skills-based health education training, both within our district and across the state. And so these stars represent the many districts that participated in our skills-based health education. So the first year, we actually went out, and we went to many of these districts and provided training. And then this year, we did it all online. But that actually had allowed a lot more districts to participate. So it has been an unintended benefit of COVID. Thank goodness for some things, right? COVID-related, I suppose. And so we're really proud that school districts were able to provide that support to other school districts who don't have a health education team that can help provide this training. We also, our comprehensive sexuality education lessons and our universal opt-out lessons that were created in PPS are being used by a number of districts in the Council of Great City Schools across the United States during comprehensive distance learning. Many school districts were not sure they would even teach sex ed, because they weren't sure they could get it just quite right in a distance learning environment. And when we presented our lessons to them, they were over the moon. And so many of these districts are using them now. And so we're really excited to be able to provide that. And also, universal opt-outs, which is that comprehensive sexuality education lessons, a student can be opted out of those. And typically, what happens then is the teacher is left with, I need to find something for this student to do for two weeks. And, you know, we just were like, that's just no way. We can't have that, we can't put that on our teachers. So we designed lessons that are connected to our state standards and align with the standards and the skill that we're focusing on for that unit, but use different content to achieve the same skill ends. So that's something that we're really, we're really, really proud of, and we're working for our K-8 teachers to roll out as well. And then, as I said, we participated in the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. So as you can see, Portland, Oregon is the only district in Oregon that participated. All of those red dots are other larger urban districts. And what's really exciting for us is that because the WRBS is nationwide, we are able to compare all of our data to all of these large urban districts as well. And which is nice for us, because again, we're able to better compare similarly-sized districts with similar demographics. Sometimes when you're the biggest in the state, and you're trying to compare against smaller districts, it doesn't always scale the same way. So we're very excited for that. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Davis to finish it up.
So empathy, curiosity, respect, and interest in other points of view. We hope our presentation tonight has given insight into how our health curriculum supports these critical attributes of a PPS graduate. And we would love to engage with you guys in any questions that you might have. And again, thank you so much for taking the time tonight to find out about the work that Jenny and her team are leading. We're really proud to be here, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anything else from any board members, any questions or comments?
I have a quick question, I know it's late. I feel like I should know more about what's happening with sex ed, what grades the curriculum is aimed at, if it's in all schools or just some. Can you speak to that? And it's a great presentation, by the way.
Oh, you're welcome.
I just don't know, I mean, I don't know where this is happening, and with who, which buildings.
Wonderful question. So we do, as I mentioned, we do four units at every grade level. And so comprehensive sex ed is one of the units that's taught every single year. And actually, I think, so this is our K-12, or, well, this is the K-5 part, but I can show you K-12. So you can see, and this is our K-5 scope and sequence. So on the far right, our Unit 4 is Growth and Development and Violence Prevention. So it is taught every single year, starting in kindergarten, all the way through eighth grade. And then it's taught twice in high school, because high school requires two semesters of health education. And so what we do is, we match it with a different skill, kind of as we go through. So you can see that it's happening in K-5. And then in 612, you can, you see, it comes back around. It's required by law that we teach it every single year, so we do have it being taught. And then it's taught by the classroom teacher in the elementary school. It's taught by a health teacher at the secondary schools, so 6 through 12. And it should be happening district-wide. Everybody should be teaching it.
Information is focused to be age-appropriate. And you'll also notice, the team, and we worked with teachers across PPS to put these together, they intentionally put the human growth and development toward the end of the year so that interpersonal relationships would be developed so that it brought more comfort, and it was a safer environment for delving into a really critically important topic.
Yeah, I have a question first, thank you. This is really informative, and particularly the microaggressions lesson, I really appreciate it. I mean, this is something that I can tell you adults are not very good at being aware of, and it's something we do a lot of training in the workplace on, with somewhat limited success. And I would say that most employers, it's one of their biggest issues, is sort of dealing with it. So I really look forward to hiring graduates of PPS who are going to have a better understanding, a more comprehensive understanding of microaggressions and why they matter. So that was exciting. This question is weird, and it's not very well-formed. It feels to me like in health curriculum, right? It needs to both be based in science and facts, and also reflect the values of the local community. And achieving that balance is what we're going to be looking for, right? And I think when you think about health, and it, you know, what I'm seeing here feels like it is reflective very much of our local community here in Portland. When you think about developing the curriculum, how do you balance between pushing far enough, right? That, again, you are being reflective of the community's values. And in, you know, Portland, we're a very, you know, progressive community, and I think tolerant of a lot of things that frankly, other communities in the United States might not be, while still making sure that we're not politicizing health curriculum in a way that we do see in other places? And I'm just curious, as a professional developing the curriculum, do you think about that? And how do you find that, how do you find that balance?
It's a wonderful question, and it's one of the most challenging things that we face in health education. So we kind of take a four-pronged approach when we're looking at developing lessons and kind of deciding where we're going to focus our efforts. You know, one is that we look at what are state laws and mandates. So, you know, we have a state law that says we're going to teach comprehensive sexuality education every year. It's a pretty robust law, it needs to be medically accurate, developmentally appropriate, LGBTQ-inclusive, trauma-informed. So there's a lot of guidance that comes from that, that's one piece of it. Then we have our state standards, right? And our performance indicators under that, which, you know, really unpack for us even more, what does this skill look like in comprehensive sexuality, or in nutrition, or in drugs and alcohol prevention education? So we can look at that piece as well. Then we look at, you know, what are the best practices right now with regards to health education? So, you know, when we look, when we look not just nationally, but globally, you know, how is health education taught? Because health education is taught very differently in countries outside the United States. So it's really great for us to look at all of the different models that are out there, and what's working best in terms of not just the absence of disease, but, you know, creating a healthy individual across the lifespan. So we look at those pieces, and those are always changing. So like, all of these things are things we have to do every year. And then that fourth piece is really the data. And the data, we try to use that from multiple perspectives. So we use data like the WRBS, or other data that might be gathered at the county level. Like, I can say by zip code, the unintended teen pregnancy rate in Multnomah County by zip code, right? And that's one piece of data, but it's absent, as you mentioned. Like, all of the nuances of that, right? Community values and experiences and things like that. So we take data points like that, and then we also match them with, what are our teachers, you know, talking to us about, what are students experiencing? What are the counselors and social workers? You know, what are the issues that are rising for them? What are our students telling us that's coming up for them? We try to hold a, like a student feedback session and forum, with middle and high school students in particular, every year. So that we're getting feedback. So that we're getting feedback on the health curriculum. And we're saying, you know, what's working? What's not? What, you know? What do we still have in there that is just not relevant for y'all anymore? And then we also, you know, we, we think about what are the, the calls that we get, you know, what do, you know, for schools needing help? And so we try to let that be the biggest guide for the, for the base. And then, yeah, and you know, as to your point, we really try to, you know, our job is not to say, you must believe this or you must believe that, but to refer to a range of healthy behaviors, right? So there is no one, um, diet. And by diet, I don't mean like dieting, but I mean like nutritional diet that is the way. There are many diets and that, and that's the, there's a lot that goes into what we decide. You know, it has nutritional value for us. And so we want to refer to that range. Uh, and so what we want to do is we want to give our students those skills um, and say, you will be faced with making these decisions. Here's the whole spectrum of decisions that might be made. And you're going to have to make the decisions that make the best sense for you. And hopefully that leads you to a healthy path. Uh, and so we really are trying to present kind of that range of values so that we're not particularly landing on any one value and saying, this is the way to, to be a healthy individual. There are many ways to health.
That's really great. Thank you.
Thank you so much, everyone. Really appreciate your time tonight and know that, um, we appreciate all that you're doing, um, with the health curriculum. And I know it's been a, it's been a long and difficult road. And I walked through some of the middle school drama around health. And I know that it's just so vitally important, especially for those middle schoolers, like you said, to be having access to this so that, um, we're not seeing in, in those high school students, those survey results like you, you mentioned. So thank you for, um, advocating for health and, uh, you know, all the ways it connects to student well-being. I appreciate that very much. Is there anything else before we close out our time together tonight? Yeah, awesome session. All right, Superintendent Guerrero, anything else before we close out our evening?
I'm glad that we had this on as a topic this evening. It's, uh, pretty relevant these times. So thank you, Sarah and Jenny for, for bringing us up to speed. Thank you.
Van has sent out a reminder that agenda setting is tomorrow at 11:00 AM. So if, uh, you are a board member and you have items for agenda setting, please make sure you email those to us before 11:00 AM. So we can have them, um, ready for our meeting. And then our next board meeting, we have a, um, special meeting on January 5th to talk about, um, making a final decision on our budget. Items that we reviewed tonight in our work session. And then our next regularly scheduled meeting will be January 12th. So, um, I know that many of our staff are exhausted. Uh, many of our staff haven't really had a break since last winter, when, um, you know, last December, December of 2019 before COVID. Um, many of them did not take breaks in the summer. And so I know that lots of folks are starting, um, break this, some this week, many next week. Um, and so we as a board are taking a little pause as well to allow our staff to, to really have the time they need after, what is it, 10 months, nine months of incredibly intense work to have that break time. So thank you all for, for understanding and respecting the staff's time during this break. And I know it's, it's probably not long enough to recover from the crazy year we've all had, but, um, I, I wish all of our staff well. And, um, I'm thankful that you have some time off. And may you have a peaceful and restful rest of the year. All right. Good night, everyone.
Telling me we have three weeks off, Ailey?
I am telling you, we have three weeks off, Andrew.
Happy holidays.
Bye.